Okay, let's see. Over here. Okay. Right before we begin, good evening and welcome to our regularly scheduled Tuesday, June 14th, 2022, meeting of the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission. Couple of things before we get started. This is live on Comcast Local 27, Channel 27, and on the Pacific Coast TV's website. We have community members in the audience, and if they choose to, they're welcome to speak. They choose to. The Plan Commission Chair will open and allow general public comment prior to the specific items. The Chair will also open up public comment during each specific item that is listed on the agenda. During that time, you're welcome to raise your virtual icon hand, and we will recognize you to speak during the public comment portion. Star six to mute and unmute if you are on telephone, as well as star nine to raise and unraise your hand. You'll get in three minutes will be given to each commenter, and a timer will show up on the screen. As of right now, I have no specific public comments that were sent. And I thank you for your patience during this remote meeting, and I turn it over to Chair Goran to officially start this evening's meeting.
Hey there. So we'll start the meeting. If you could rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll start that way. Pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll call Bridget, please.
Commissioner Reddick?
I'm here.
Commissioner Gossett?
Here.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Right here.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
I am present.
And Chair Goran?
I'm here too.
All Commissioners are present this evening.
So first, we're going to approve the minutes for May 24th. That was our Coastside Recovery Initiative meeting. Anyone have questions or concerns about those minutes? We have Commissioner Benjamin.
Moving to approve.
Ah, there you go.
Okay.
Wait a second. There's a second.
Commissioner Reddick?
Commissioner Reddick.
Okay, Commissioner Reddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Benjamin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Aye.
And Chair Goran?
Yes, please.
Minutes approved.
So this is the time to our audience, our audience have won. But now's the time to talk about something that is not on the agenda. If you have something that you want to talk about that is not on the Commission's agenda tonight, just raise your little icon hand, and we will open up public comment. Okay, so. I'm seeing none. Bridget, is that right?
Correct. No one's raising their hands.
So I would like to, so we'll move on to the, our one agenda item for tonight. We are not taking the vote on this one. This is the electrification ordinance that the City Council has already passed. So personally, I am eager to find, to understand how that ordinance relates to any future projects that we, that will come before us. So that's what we're going to find out as I understand it. So staff, Jill, is that you?
I'll just introduce the item, and then we'll bring Veronica on. Thank you for letting us present this to you tonight. The Commission saw a bit of an early talk on the Climate Adaptation and Action Plan. Veronica presented to you previously about that. City Council's been working hard on the electrification ordinance, as well as the EV and PV ordinance. Veronica is planning to present both of these to you, but with a break in the middle, so there's time for discussion. We thought it'd be really relevant for the Commission to see where all of this landed and the triggers for different components of it relative to land uses. The Commission often is interested in sustainability measures for residential mixed use, really any kind of project, and has applied conditions of approval related to some projects that are relevant to this ordinance. We think this ordinance is going to help kind of standardize, clearly set a floor for what is required, and Veronica will give you more details about that. I believe she's going to start with the building electrification ordinance and introducing Veronica Bostinak, who is our Sustainability Analyst. Thanks for coming tonight, Veronica.
Yeah, thanks, Jill. And good evening, Chair and Commissioners. It's really great to be here. I think it's, I think it's been a while since you've seen me. So it's really good to be here. Let me share my screen. I always tend to have the wrong screen up. So can you see my screen in presentation mode?
Yes.
Awesome. Okay, great. So as Jill mentioned, I'm Veronica Bostinak. I'm the Sustainability Analyst for the, for the city. I've worked with the City Council on this ordinance throughout 2021. I put this one in the EV PV reach code. And I thought, just as Jill mentioned, to present it in manageable chunks, I would start with the building electrification ordinance, since that is effective currently. And then I'll follow after some questions and discussion and talk about the EV PV reach code. So giving a little bit of background, I never like to assume that everybody has the same vocabulary as I do. So I'll start with what is building electrification? And building electrification describes the move away from fuel gas, so natural gas or propane-powered appliances, towards highly efficient electric alternatives. There's a couple, there's various benefits for adopting a policy like the one that we did earlier this year. The first is it will assist the state in reaching their climate targets. So the state has called for 40% reduction of greenhouse gas emissions from 1990 levels by 2030, and also calls for the state to reach carbon neutrality by 2045. Commercial and residential buildings, gas and electricity, statewide accounts for 25% of the state's emissions. So in order to get to the 2045 date, or even 2030 goals, we need to address buildings in some way, especially in regards to natural gas and propane use. There's also some public health and safety benefits. The first, there's a fire risk associated with the gas infrastructure, especially in the event of an earthquake, which we're very familiar with here in California. And also, there's links to decreased indoor air quality with gas appliances, specifically in relation to respiratory and cardiovascular disease, and increased asthma rates, especially in children. So giving you an example, or showing you what our greenhouse gas emission inventory looked like in 2017. We're currently working on an updated inventory for 2019, but those numbers aren't ready yet. So I'm showing you 2017 tonight. You can see that building energy is actually our highest emitter at 49%, very closely followed by transportation, and then solid waste, wastewater, and water. Looking at the building energy side, about 80% of that 49% comes from natural gas use in buildings. And on the right-hand side, you can see the breakdown of commercial and residential emissions associated with natural gas use. So you can see that commercial is about one and a half times that of what we see in our residential buildings. So some key points of the ordinance that was adopted earlier this year. It was adopted in February. It is currently effective. It became effective on March 17th. This ordinance regulates fuel gas use in buildings, and it's mainly focused on new construction. I'm not sure if any of the Commissioners, or if any of the members of the public watching tonight, watched the progress that this ordinance went through. We originally had considered, the City Council originally considered some provisions for existing buildings, and some of those still remain, but it's mainly focused on new construction. The Council also adopted an end-of-flow date, so no more natural gas use in buildings by January 1st, 2045. Practically, this means that gas lines should be capped or decommissioned by that date. I'll go over in a little bit more detail what that might look like on a, on a future slide. And it also means that all exemptions expire on that date as well. And you may notice that this date lines up very nicely with the state's goal to reach carbon neutrality by 2045. There are a couple pieces that I want to point out that can cause some confusion, that are out of scope for this ordinance. The first being portable propane tanks, so those five-gallon tanks that you get at the gas station to power your grill or your fire pit outside. Those are not regulated by the ordinance, as well as mobile or manufactured homes. These homes are regulated by state code and not impacted by our local ordinances. So, so this ordinance would not apply in these situations either. Talking about new buildings, so projects with their building permits issued in 2023 and beyond, so starting January 1st, 2023, all of these buildings must be built all-electric. There's very few exceptions, which I'll go over in a, in a later slide. So more or less, any new buildings built in 2023 and beyond must be built all-electric. The City Council had some sensitivity for projects that were in progress while the ordinance was being formalized. So there is a little bit of an exemption for projects that receive, that have their building permits issued between March 17th and December 31st of this year. These projects can continue to install gas appliances. However, they must electrically pre-wire for electric appliances in any location where a gas appliance is installed. So that means setting aside space in your panel, installing a circuit, having the outlet for the appliance, and clearly labeling each of those, saying that it's for a future stove, or for a future electric water heater. So it's very clear for any other occupants of that building what those circuits and what those outlets are intended for. Talking about existing buildings, so any current all-electric residential building may no longer add gas service or add a gas line. We don't want to move backwards and allow any building that's all-electric to add a gas line looking forward to that 2045 date. This provision does not apply, however, for commercial or mixed-use buildings. It's solely for currently all-electric residential buildings. I wanted to talk a little bit more about the termination of gas service, which is slated for 2045. This again will be for all buildings. And these buildings must either cap their gas connection to the building, or the gas lines will be decommissioned. Decommissioning the gas lines will need to happen in conjunction with PG&E. And staff is currently working with PG&E to outline what that process will look like. So it's not clear the exact steps that will happen to decommission these lines, but we're working on them currently with PG&E, and PG&E is supportive of these efforts in Half Moon Bay and statewide. What we're more likely to see, especially in the short term, is capping connections to the buildings. And there have been some questions that I've received from various constituents on who will pay for the capping of this gas connection. And PG&E has a standard agreement. Anytime they add gas service to a building, and as long as that line is receiving service for 10 years or more, that cost to cap the line will be absorbed by PG&E. If somebody wanted to cap their line less than 10 years from when the gas service started, then that cost would be on the building owner. I've heard various numbers for what this can cost, but generally, it would cost between $5,000 and $10,000. And I did also want to mention, I said that there were a lot of iterations of this policy. The City Council considered adding provisions for burnout, so anytime a appliance would need to be replaced, or for renovations. These provisions did not make it in the ordinance that was adopted and is currently effective. But the City Council does want to take a look at this policy and the current landscape every year to see if there's more incentives available, more financing opportunities, if the technology is cheaper, if better data about what it will look like to electrify our buildings here in Half Moon Bay. So this is the ordinance as it stands now, but I expect that over, between now and 2045, there may be a couple different iterations leading to that 2045 date. There are some exemptions to the ordinance, and again, these do expire January 1st, 2045, to line up with the end-of-flow date. The first would be for attached ADUs. Any attached ADU, or an ADU that's wholly within a primary residence, when that residence is currently mixed-fuel or has gas service, those attached ADUs may install gas appliances to be used in that ADU. Commercial greenhouses, wastewater treatment facilities, and generators all have exemptions through 2045 as well. And there is an opportunity for an applicant to file for an infusibility waiver if they feel as though there is a technical or physical infusibility, the technology doesn't exist, or there's a conflict with some other city regulations, such as historic preservation. And there are a lot of resources out there. Half Moon Bay is not working on this alone. This is something, again, that's statewide, and there's a lot of really great resources to help new developers, but also existing homeowners who may be interested in making this switch sooner rather than later. The first that I wanted to highlight was AllElectricDesign.org. This is a program that's funded by Peninsula Clean Energy and Silicon Valley Clean Energy. They provide free technical assistance to homeowners or developers that are looking to build or retrofit their homes, or commercial or mixed-use buildings. You can call, there's a quick application that you need to fill out that just has some contact information and information about your project. But there's specialists in electric design, there's architects, there's building engineers, that are all really passionate and knowledgeable about the technology that exists, and very mindful about the cost and some of the various issues that can come about in different scenarios. They also have some assistance available for solar panel and battery backup projects. And any Peninsula Clean Energy customer is entitled to about 20 hours of their time. I utilized this service when my gas wall heater went out earlier this year, and they were very, very helpful, and I would highly recommend them for somebody who just needs help navigating this world. Because even, even when you know a lot, it can be a little bit difficult, depending on your specific situation. With, there are some construction guides available. There's Redwood Energy, who specializes in affordable housing, but also has a construction guide for other projects that outline a lot of the technology that's available, the pros and cons, the prices, and how to design. So it's really great for a contractor who may be not as familiar with, with electric technology. There's a lot of really great information in there. And there's also, AllElectric Design has some construction guides as well. And that is both for new buildings and for existing buildings. Bayren, which is a regional, or, I don't even know, a regional, I don't know what the noun would be. Sorry. But a regional program that provides some contractor training. There's a lot of contractors that are still getting up to speed on some of this technology, so they have free training available for those contractors, and also connecting them with some of the incentive programs that are available, so that they can provide, do the paperwork and provide these incentives to their customers much easier than the homeowners having to do it themselves. And there's also a watt diet calculator. I think this is a little bit more relevant for existing buildings, but could be relevant for new buildings as well. This calculator helps somebody figure out how to choose appliances that will work within their panel size. So some people may have 100-amp panels, which need a little bit of planning when it comes to adding or retrofitting with electric, or if you want to keep your panel size on the smaller side. And this calculator helps you choose various types of appliances that will fit within, that will fit within the amount that you, the amount that you have in your panel. So it's a way that people can really find a way to fit what they need to on their 100-amp panel, or without having to upgrade their panel to a larger size, which can be a big expense. And last, there's a lot of incentives and financing. Again, this is a little bit more relevant for existing buildings. The Switches On is a really great resource that outlines the incentives and will connect you with contractors, so you can get quotes for your specific project. And I did want to also plug that Peninsula Clean Energy is working on an on-bill financing program where they will provide $10,000 for any of their customers that are in good standing. I believe it will be three bills paid on time, the past three bills paid on time, with 0%. Sorry, 0% interest on that $10,000. So people who may not qualify for incentives, and the incentives may not cover the project fully, there will be some financing opportunities available through Peninsula Clean Energy later this year. So I'm really looking forward to that program launching. So here, I will take a break and see if you guys have any questions, or if there's anything that you want to discuss, before we move on to electric vehicles and solar system, or solar panel systems, sorry.
Commissioner Reddick?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Veronica, for this report.
Yeah.
I'm curious, as to, not that it's very germane to the policies or anything, but I'm curious if you have an estimate for what percent of commercial greenhouse gases that commercial greenhouses account for in the city?
I don't have that number offhand, and I expect that number to be, to be better in our 2019 inventory. We're updating our numbers, but we're also doing a little bit of quality control in the numbers that we have for commercial buildings. I wanted to get a little bit better data on, so that's something that we're working on. But what I can say is we have about a million square feet of greenhouses in the city. So it's, it's, it's a decent percentage. I don't have the number offhand, sorry.
Excuse me. That million square feet, can you estimate how much of the total commercial square footage in the city there is?
Again, I don't know that number offhand, and that's the number that can be a little bit difficult to get. So.
I understand.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. Thank, thank you.
No problem.
And Commissioner Benjamin?
Thank you. And I do have questions about policy, the way it applies to the Planning Commission, but I'm going to hold those back for, at the conclusion of the presentation. So thanks, Veronica, for coming tonight, and for the earlier presentation you gave to the public some months ago. I enjoyed that as well. There was a slide right at the beginning, you don't need to go back to it. It talked about how much of our greenhouse gas emissions were building-related versus how much was transportation. And I just had a question about the definition of transportation in that context. Are we counting the greenhouse gases emitted by our cars? Is the model based on residences, residences plus visitors? You know, the visitor is idling through town on heavy beach traffic days? What goes into transportation?
Yeah, so this transportation piece is another one that we're looking at revisiting. So there's some state guidance on how you calculate vehicles' mile traveled. One is inbound, so it's looking at any of the cars that are moving on the streets and highways, and, and not counting where they come from or where they end. They're just looking at the cars that are passing. You know, if somebody's going from Pescadero to Montero, it would count their. it would count their trips within Half Moon Bay city limits. Uh we're looking, we're looking to um change that to an origin destination model. So actually taking a look at where the trip starts and where the trip ends. Um and if it ends or begins in the city limits, um that will count towards our emission inventory. Um so it I'll, we think that that'll be a little bit more accurate um and than what we currently have. Um and we will be updating um the same um using the same methodology for previous greenhouse gas emission inventories so we can see um the trends and uh so I don't know if that answers your question, but.
That was a helpful answer. I it might be worth discussing later because I think there are aspects, you know, there are trade-offs in those definitions. Uh if someone doesn't have a destination, Half Moon Bay they're passing through and they're spewing fossil fuels, we could pretend it's not here, but it's here. Um so I I will hold off on my my other questions uh for the time being. Thank you.
Um yeah, I appreciate you uh waiting to have the full discussion later. I know this is for sort of so that we all understand uh what you're talking about. Krishna Gossett, Insurganda.
Thank you, Veronica, for this presentation. Nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you too.
I have um, I think I read in the report, or maybe I uh heard you in the report that you gave to the uh commission um in the past. Did you say that the water heater is the appliance that um emits the most greenhouse gas within a uh home? Is that the appliance that?
Yeah, um I did not, I I don't, if you give me a second, I can get that.
That's okay, because I was just wondering like the biggest thing in your book, if you were gonna replace that appliance uh at Burnout, not that it's mandated.
Yeah.
Um which uh which uh device would that be or appliance in the house?
Yeah, so um that's that's an interesting question. That's something that I've thought about um a little bit. And I have personally settled on water heaters mainly because they are one of the bigger, uh stoves being one of the the smaller. I think that furnaces may actually be the 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 largest. Um but water heaters have a much shorter lifespan. So um you know, if we if we're likely to replace more and more water heaters um in a period of time, then we are space heating. So um yeah, you're you're looking at either the amount by volume of water heaters or by, you know, in your home. So I think there's a couple of different ways you can look at that. Um but I do I do think that water heaters, if you were to pick one appliance, I think water heaters might be a a good choice. Yeah.
Um I do have one other question if uh Vice Chair Hernandez doesn't have a question. Um I wanted to know um so is there a limit on sort of the number of propane tanks that that businesses or or residences can have? Because I can see this sort of that being used as a way to continue having a fire pit or a um or uh other uh outdoor stove or whatever. So um what's?
Uh you're talking about the portable propane tanks?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, those those are not regulated uh by the ordinance at all. So um there there there's no limit.
Okay, thank you. So I think we're good.
Okay, great. I will share my screen again. Yeah, great. I can get to the next slide here. There we go. All right, so next I want to talk about our EV PV reach code. And of course, um EV stands for electric vehicle and PV stands for photovoltaic um systems. And again, um starting with my definition, uh what is a reach code? So a reach code is um a local energy efficiency enhancement to the state code. Um so this is a little bit different than our um building electrification ordinance, which was a standalone ordinance. Um a reach code um specifically edits the the building code, which um is updated every three years. Um a reach code can be adopted at any time. Um this reach code that was adopted at the end of 2021 would um be amendments to the 2019 code. And the next code cycle um is the 2022 code, which will be um uh adopted at the end of this year and will take effect on January first, 2023. Reach codes generally address um electric vehicle charging for increased EV readiness or solar panel systems or PV systems for increased energy generation. They can also um look at uh building decarbonization um such as a building electrification ordinance. Some uh municipalities have used reach codes to um require all electric new construction. Um but but we decided to do it in um in a different way, but decided to address um EV and PV in a reach code. Um this uh ordinance was adopted at the end of last year, so in December of 2021. Um these ordinance, these reach codes need to be um approved by the CEC, the California Energy Commission, in order for them to be effective. So we're still waiting on CEC approval for this ordinance, so it is not currently effective. Um as of this time, we're we don't have a date for when the CEC will be looking to approve our ordinance. Um but if if we're not able to get it in for this code cycle, um these policies will be included uh in the 2022 building code update, which is currently being developed and will be adopted again at the end of this year. Um these reach codes uh only impact new construction. So um I'll go over them in a little bit more detail in the next slides, but there are some added um PV requirements for commercial, high-rise residential and hotel motels. Um you may know that there is a um current requirement for low-rise residential buildings. Um so this kind of fills a gap um for any buildings that don't fall uh under that requirement. Um it also requires that residential buildings pre-wire for a backup battery um in residential projects. So they are required to install solar and it can be a little bit of a pain point for people who have installed solar and want a uh backup battery later on. Uh it can be much more expensive and much more difficult um to do that after the fact rather than when you're installing your PV system. Um so we're uh requiring that any new residential buildings pre-wire for a backup battery so that that building owner or a future building owner can easily install a battery if if they would like. Um and we also have some um added EV requirements for residential um only. We we utilize the Peninsula Clean Energy uh model code for the EV charging um but decided to do so for residential and not commercial because our commercial um projects can have a little bit of uh space issues and uh specificity that we felt was better addressed on a case-by-case basis. Um so going into a little bit more detail on the uh PV additions. So um non-residential buildings and hotel motel buildings are defined differently in the building code. Um and so we've required that fifteen percent of the roof area for non-residential buildings um include a PV system uh and a five percent roof area for hotel motel buildings. Um and these numbers aren't arbitrary. There's uh a requirement for any reach codes that these um any of the provisions must be um cost-effective. And there um and these are the percentages uh where uh these systems are cost-effective for these various types of buildings. And then again, uh there's the requirement to pre-wire for a backup battery for um residential buildings. And uh you can see in 2019 that there none, none of these um, none of these are are currently required or there's not a lesser requirement in the 2019 code. They're they're not addressed at all. Um it's also worth noting that the non-residential buildings and the hotel motel buildings, while in the 2019 code, are not required to install a PV system. They are required to set aside a solar zone uh to add a PV system. So these um this requirement would just have them fill that zone that they are required to set aside with a PV system. Um and next, uh electric vehicle charging, I wanted to do a little bit of uh a vocabulary lesson before we get here as well. Um because there's a there's a lot of uh uh specific points here. So um there are various levels of EV charging. There's level one, level two and level three. Um this has to do with how fast it charges your vehicle and how much power is drawn. So a level one is a regular one-twenty outlet um and only charges a vehicle um for about three to four miles per charging hour, so it's a pretty slow. Um a level two charges a little faster at ten to twenty miles per charging hour. And this has a two-forty outlet, such as what you might see for your dryer. Um and a level three is um the superchargers uh and those would charge for a hundred and fifty miles per charging hour and um draw a lot more power than level one and level two. Um EV capable means that um there is a circuit for the EV charging, but there's not an outlet. It's not ready for um somebody to to plug their vehicle into. Um EV ready and has the um outlet installed, so somebody can charge their electric vehicle right after construction of that uh space. And then the EV charging station is the actual charging station itself. Something like you might see uh on the street with the public uh stations. Um so looking at single-family homes, um the 2019 code currently requires that there's a level-two EV capable space. Uh one, one EV capable space per dwelling unit. So again, having the um the circuit and the space set aside. And then what our reach code would require is two EV spaces. One would be a level-two EV-ready circuit, so one of those dryer outlets, and the other would be a level-one EV-ready circuit, so just a standard one-twenty outlet. Um there is an exemption if you only have one space. If you have a garage that just has room for one car, there's an exception. You can just have the um one level-two EV-ready circuit. Uh for multifamily buildings, the 2019 building code requires that ten percent of the spaces for the multifamily homes um have are EV capable. Um and our reach code requires that um for the first twenty dwelling units, um there are um twenty-five percent level-two EV-ready and seventy-five percent um oh, 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 sorry. There's uh the first twenty dwelling units have a level-two EV-ready space. And then beyond that, beyond the twenty um units, twenty-five percent of the remaining will be level-two EV-ready and the remaining seventy-five percent will be level-one EV-ready. And there's a little bit of allowance for um affordable housing. Affordable housing uh can have ten percent of those beyond the first twenty uh dwelling units be level-two and ninety percent should be level-one. Um and I will note that there are a lot of really great incentives available even for um new construction when it comes to EV charging. Um and there's um even more of those incentives available for affordable housing projects. Um and Peninsula Clean Energy has been really willing to work with affordable housing um developers to find uh whatever works best for them and maximize the amount of EV charging um available within their budget. Um and last, uh there is an allowance for automatic load management. Um this is not allowed under the 2019 building code, but will be included in the 2022 code. Um and basically, this automated automatic load management system allows multiple EV chargers to share a circuit. So um this is especially relevant when you're looking at um commercial buildings or multifamily buildings where there may may be more than one charger. Um and it's um they may be there for varying amounts of time. So it spreads out um how the charging is disseminated between the cars that are plugged in. Um it will, if more cars are plugged in, it will do it at a slower rate. And then as more and more cars unplug, the cars that are remaining will be at a higher rate. Um so this is done so it can reduce the power, so there's not, you know, um fifteen circuits uh set aside for the charging since people may be there at varying times. Um it really allows them to uh maximize the amount of power that's drawn from the grid or minimize, I guess. Um and it um so this system is not allowed under the 2019 building code, um but will be included in the 2022. Um but this has been shown to be pretty beneficial uh for multifamily and commercial uh projects. So uh we wanted to make sure that it was uh allowed um in the meantime before the 2022 code uh comes into place. So um that is my presentation on our EV PV and I'll um uh pause for, stop for questions and comments.
Before we start in on this, um I did want to open it up for public comment to see if there's anybody who wants to um um comment, comment. Uh so anyone in the public, in the audience, who would like to weigh in on this issue? Now is the time to raise your hand. Bridget, do we have anybody?
Uh no, we have three people in the audience, or the attendees this evening, and I have seen them.
Okay. So uh we are uh we are going to open this up to um commissioners to um clarify this a little bit more. Uh Commissioner Benjamin, what you got?
Uh thank you, Chair Gorn. I went first the last time. I'm happy to take a later place.
Say it again?
I'm happy to take a later place in line if somebody else wants to.
Yeah, everybody else has a hand up too. You just had your hand up first. So why don't we start with Vice Chair Hernandez then?
Wonderful presentation. Um can we go back? Can we carry this presentation back up for a second?
No problem.
And can you go back a couple of slides? I just wanted to look again at the um.
Yeah, which, do you have one in?
The single family. Okay. So um what we're saying here is every new home has to have at least one level-two EV kit will charge in it per dwelling unit.
That's what the 2019 code currently requires. So the the reach code would have two uh one level-two EV-ready circuit, so the actual outlet um as opposed to just the cir- uh as opposed to just the the space for it. Um and then a level-one um un- unless there's only one parking space, then if there's just one parking space, it would be a level-two.
Okay, great. And um you know, have you gotten any pushback or uh from the to the development community or anybody in the community at large about this particular requirement?
I have not. I don't know, Jill, if you've if you've heard anything um that I haven't. But I will say that um we utilize the Peninsula Clean Energy uh and the Silicon Valley Clean Energy Code model code, which is adopted in uh, I want to say, at least half of the cities in San Mateo County. And there was a lot of outreach um that they did prior to developing the code. Um and a lot of contractors are really familiar with it because this is what they see um in the county. And I'm in, that includes the unincorporated counties, so um Montero, Moss Beach, El Granada.
So for both the single family and the multifamily development, you're using a standard that people have experienced across the Bay Area, so it's easier for folks to comply?
Correct.
Great. Okay, those are all the questions I had. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Um Commissioner Gossett, you have your hand up.
Thank you, Chair Gorn. I have a question about pre-wire for the battery. So I I read in the code that um the pre-wire requirement was for a five-kilowatt-hour battery. And the question I have is, will the pre-wiring accommodate any type of battery? Because there's many different vendors out there. And um what happens, that's one question. And then the second part of that pre-wire question, what happens if a homeowner needs a ten-kilowatt-hour battery? Would that wire, pre-wiring accommodate that? Or would they have to go back and add more wire? And you know, I I mean, I'm not an electrician, so I ca- I wouldn't know if that pre-wire would be enough to accommodate, you know, a a larger kilowatt-hour battery.
Yeah, I mean, I think it depends a little bit on 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 how the pre-wiring is done and 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 how it's set up and the individual choices that the the developer makes. But um so I don't have an an exact uh answer for you on that. Um but it is meant to be as adaptable as possible for. But it is meant to be as adaptable as possible for any future battery installation. But I, but unfortunately, I can't give you an answer of whether they can install something larger or specific brands.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Hernandez, your hand is still up, I assume you're done, okay. One question before we get to Commissioner, oh, Commissioner Riddick, yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Veronica, to follow up on Vice Chair Hernandez's question about the parking spaces, does that mean that that new residences will be required to have two EV ready spaces regardless of whether their total number of spaces is two or three or six?
Correct. So it would be two.
And of course, is different if there's only one.
Right, right. If there's only one, but if there's more than two, if they have three, four, or five spaces, there there's still just a requirement for two.
Thank you for that.
I had one other question before we get to Commissioner Benjamin. The the single family and the multifamily seems very clear to me, but I don't quite really understand the ADU requirements. So can you, can you just sort of clarify? Because that seems like that's going to be coming before us a lot.
Yeah, so with the ADUs, if there's not a dedicated parking space, they're not required to provide an outlet in a space that doesn't exist. But if they are providing parking for that ADU, covered parking, then they they need to install a level two ready outlet.
So you could conceivably have multi, you could have five ADUs. But if they don't have a parking space set aside for them.
Yeah, if there's no dedicated parking for the ADU, there's no requirement to install.
Okay. Thank you. And Commissioner Benjamin.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate all of the questions that my colleagues asked, and I appreciate your presentation. And I'm going to focus first on the questions to relate to the electrical part and then maybe shift to the questions about the mechanics of how the planning commission uses the electrification ordinance and the process of considering land use planning. Because I I see a couple of potential ways that could happen. And I'm not sure whether one or the other or both are the ways that staff envisions. But first, I I want to piggyback on Commissioner Hernandez's question about the the charging at a single residence. I noticed that the code calls for a level one and a level two, as you said. No one would complain if there were two level twos, right? Level one is any, it's at or above that level. So if someone wanted to, the reality of the of the world today in electrical charging is if you have a significant commute, three or four miles an hour may not get you where you want to be overnight. So it makes more sense in some ways to have a higher power capacity. But as you know, so first I'll just want to check on that. Two level twos is perfectly fine, right?
Yeah, yeah, people are are welcome to do anything beyond beyond what's called for in the ordinance, yes.
Yeah, I know there was a story in the in the in the press a couple of maybe less than a week ago where the governor of the state of Colorado went off about the cost of home charging. And he talked about ten or fifteen thousand dollars impacting the ability of consumers to have a home charging station. I just want, for anybody in the public who might have read that, I just want to point out that the governor seemed to be confusing level three charging, which can be expensive, with, and is completely unnecessary for residents, with a level two charger, which I installed one myself a few years ago. I think it cost me about two hundred dollars in in parts, maybe a little bit more since I had to put in a sub panel. But please don't be put off. The cost is really quite minimal. You mentioned the load management. What was the term you used?
Automatic load management.
Right, really useful technology. I've been thinking about it. You mentioned it in the context of multifamily and commercial. Do you envision that as a solution that's feasible? If someone wants to put in, say, two level two chargers, but they don't have the ampacity in their panel to provide for that. So their panel is a little bit too full, so they have one branch circuit that they can devote. If they use an auto load management tool on that single circuit, it results in two outlets that two different cars could be plugged into. Is that, does that comply with the with the existing ordinance?
Yes, yes, it does. And I I will also mention that that's similar technologies available for other uses as well. So there's a, you can get a switch that maybe serves your your level two EV outlet and maybe your dryer or something. And so you would either use your dryer or your electric vehicle charger. So you would want to plan it so that you're probably not using those appliances at the same time. But that's another creative way that you can get away with organizing your panel so that you don't have to upgrade and deal with all the costs associated with that, but still electrify or add EV charging.
Right, right. So I, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to be sure I understood it. Then a little further back, when we were talking about PV panels and the reservation, oh, I'm sorry. The point Commissioner Gossit's question about the size of the wiring. I share her confusion a little bit because I think of wiring as a measure of the capacity to transmit power rather than the total energy stored. So for example, for a fifty amp outlet, the one that was the the level two in your picture, the NEMA fourteen fifty receptible, that would typically be like a six gauge three conductor wire. That could handle forty amps. At two hundred and forty volts, that's, that's a pretty impressive bit of kilowatts. But maybe, I'm sure that there's more thinking that went into that five kilowatt hour model. But I I don't understand it well enough to be able to explain it to a resident who asked. And I'm reasonably handy at this stuff. So I would appreciate getting some pointer, not necessarily on the fly tonight, but some pointer to understanding what what really is, you know, are the people, the contractors look and say, well, my rule of thumb is I need six gauge wires and four gauge wires. There's ultimately, there's some physical diameter of wire of copper or aluminum or whatever that they're going to put in those races. And it would be good to have a clearer interpretation of what it is that they really want. And I suspect it's more power related than total storage capacity related.
Yeah, I'm happy to get some more information. I worked with with some people from PG, for PCE and some contractors on identifying that number. But I'm happy to get a little bit more detail on, you know, how if you can expand beyond that five and how about the brands? I'm I'm really happy to get some more information about that and provide that to you at a later date.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, you know, a circuit with the, that was charging at a hundred and twenty volts, for example, still needs a lot of amps to generate power. If you switch that to two hundred and forty volts, you suddenly raise the power dramatically. But the wire in the box hasn't changed. So there's, there's more to this than meets the eye, and I just want to understand it better. And I think if I understood Commissioner Gossit's question, she may have the same, the same curiosity. Then on the the solar, when I was reading through the staff report, I noticed, you know, the five percent and the fifteen percent that you put up in the slides and that that I understand its consistency. I seem to remember an exception where it wouldn't be feasible because of solar shading. Do I remember that right? Where there might be, there would be reasons why you might not need to do that. And I know that we also have an ordinance that provides, not an ordinance, sorry, statute, I think, that says that you can require essentially a solar easement, that you can have sunlight on your house or your building in a way that doesn't. I'm trying to figure out, those two might collide, and I'm trying to figure out how we reconcile them. Can you help me?
I think, I don't know if I'm understanding what you're talking about with a solar easement.
Okay, so yeah, let me try again. I probably, and I probably botched it up anyway. But but my understanding is that, let's say I have a neighbor with a big tall tree and he's shading my roof during some significant hours of the day. Maybe I don't get, you know, I get solar like when the sun is right overhead. But at some point, the sun shifts and my panels are shaded, so I'm not getting energy from my system. And my sense is that's the place where this exception for PV shading might come into effect. And I'm trying to, you know, if it's on your property, you can kind of make it a smaller tree. You don't have to make it a big tree. But the question is, you know, if our ordinance says you're supposed to put in this thing and the the applicant comes along and says, I can't because of that tree on my neighbor's property that's taken out my sunshine, so it's not feasible, so I'm not going to do it. How do we reconcile those situations? Or does this, is this just, we haven't gotten there yet?
Right, yeah, I think that's something I need to look a little bit more into, the the right to, you know, to to receive so, to have a space on your house to receive UV rays for a solar panel. So I I I unless, Jill, you have heard of this, I'm I'm happy to look into a little bit more and provide some more information later on.
Okay, yeah, that that works for me, and Jill may know the answer now. She can dispatch it if she does.
I have, I have, Winter probably has some background on this as well. My answer is about the other condition, which which came first. So in the event that the solar panels are already installed, the tree doesn't get to come in later and take away the solar access, just like we look at for buildings that are casting a shadow on existing installations. But I think Veronica and I should go take a look at what it means in the other condition. I'm not sure that there's some kind of a right to have sun on your roof right now.
Yeah, and there may not be, right? I've heard of this concept, but it's vaguely defined, so I don't want to over construe it. But, you know, if we intend to get there, we may have to break some eggs or it may be unconstitutional to expect someone to cut down their tree or replace it with something smaller. If Winter has additional thoughts?
Yeah, my only additional thoughts on this is, you know, the neighbor that is installing the solar panel always has the right to negotiate and purchase a solar easement from the neighbor with the tree. We get into some constitutional issues when the city mandates that as soon as your neighbor puts on a solar panel, you have to cut down your tree that you've had. Plus, I can see some pesky neighbor issues coming up. If you want your view, you put up a solar panel and tell your neighbor they have to cut down the tree. So so that is my understanding, that it's not about a mandate. Once a solar panel goes up, everybody else has to, you know, chopped off your second story or cut down your tree. But there is a definitely a free market where neighbors can negotiate these things and you can acquire a solar easement.
I see, whole new markets of, who would have thought it? All right, let's see then. You mentioned the challenges of being an existing PV owner who would like to get batteries in the slides where you were talking about. And I I want to testify that I have had that experience. I've had solar in my roof since twenty sixteen. And when I call the people that PCE says you can call to get batteries, the first question they ask me is, do you want to bundle that with PV? And when my answer, no, all I hear is a click. Because they're not talking to me anymore. They want to amortize their sales cost with the the batteries and a PV system. So I raised that with PCE a while back, and they said, oh, we're going to have this great new thing. Watch this space. The feedback is that I'm watching the space and it's been a couple of years and nothing has happened, as far as I can tell. And, you know, maybe that's just the way it is. And we're waiting for market conditions that there are so many batteries that they can provide for all of the electric vehicles and still have enough batteries for anybody who wants to put it on, who already had solar. But that seems like a long time from now. So I'm asking you to take that feedback back. You know, maybe I'm missing something at PC's website. So far, I'm not getting it.
Yeah, I'm not aware. I've I've only heard frustrations on people who have existing systems trying to get batteries. So that's something I I have discussed a little bit with PCE. And part of the reason why we wanted to make sure that this didn't continue to happen with new buildings that are getting solar panels, since they're required. We don't want them to be in this situation. So if I do know of any programs, I'm happy to share. But I I'm also not aware of any of any programs that assist with just battery installation.
I want to be clear, I'm not asking for personal favor to make.
No, I mean, in general. I would be very happy to share that information.
The nexus with the with the reach ordinance that we're discussing is that it is, it is a inhibitor to the the transition, the early adoption of electric appliances, displacing gas appliances in people's houses. If they're concerned that those gas appliances will not be available because, well, that the electric replacements will not be available in the event of a power outage, right? Because electric outage, you know, we have PSPs all the time. Gas shutdowns, not so much. And, you know, for something like a water heater with a thermocouple, it's electricity is not needed for that to work, right? For a gas range, you can light your gas range with a match. You don't need the diesel electric. But if you've gone to an all electric solution for some of these appliances and you don't have battery backup, you're going to think twice about making that decision before you really have to. So it's, it's inhibiting our, it's creating a disincentive for us to move forward to not have abundant battery solutions. Now, none of us here are the market maker. I get it. So I'm not asking for a fix. I just want to recognize where the, where I think the problem is. In the meantime, if someone wanted to buy a backup generator that ran on natural gas, is that excluded by the ordinance now?
It is.
Okay, so their solution for backup power is a battery that charges their solar. That's it.
Generators are are still allowed.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
I may have, may have misunderstood your question. But generators, natural gas powered generators are still allowed. There is specific exemption in the building electrification ordinance.
Thank you, thank you. I, now I get it. All right, so that's, that's a, that's a worthwhile exception. There was a question earlier about whether space heaters or water heaters were the larger consumer of power. I just wanted to say, in looking at the PCE website, I see that it's not necessarily an either or when you think about replacement. I suggest you look at a company called Autumn Harvest, is it Autumn Harvest? That uses the water heater as a thermal battery. And the heat in the in the water tank, which is a large water tank, allows, it's combined with a heat pump technology that allows that to be a space heater as well. So there's some, there's an elegant solution that addresses both. And I'm, I'm looking into it myself. Members of the public may want to, may want to look into it as well. I suspect they're not the only vendor, but they were highlighted on the the city's website. Sorry, on the PCE website. I appreciate the restrictions of gas on existing structures and the ADUs that are attached to existing structures. In some ways, this reminds me a little bit of the challenges that we've had with parking within the city in a limited space. And in the places, you know, where the restriction isn't physical area, but trying to keep the cost of an ADU down. Or in in the case of a place where it's very hard to put on solar because of the second story building next to it or the trees next to it, maybe it's really hard for them to do that. In situations where people can't provide their own parking, we encourage. we encourage, you know, we have looked at cases where we've allowed parking to be shared for different times of day. And analogously, in the world of uh, electric power, I wonder if there's some possibility in the market where maybe my neighbor or I don't have room to put on the kind of PV system I'd like, but down the street, there's a, there's a neighbor or maybe across town, there's uh, an industrial visitor serving building that has all kinds of room. And maybe uh, I can, you know, maybe there's a market for me to get my power, achieve my power goals by using the real estate somewhere else, the same way we use other real estate for parking. It's not the low-hanging fruit yet, but at some point, I can imagine it becoming that, especially in more uh, concentrated sections of town where buildings could be a different height. Have other cities hit this problem yet?
I'm not aware of um, any, I, I mean, I know there's some um, some areas, some neighborhoods that are experimenting, uh, looking at microgrid projects, which I think is a little bit at what you're getting at. So, you know, uh, having a power generation, I, I've seen this more um, in desert communities where you would imagine there's a lot of sun. Uh, and uh, some of these communities may be off the grid and may have unreliable power where they've looked at um, setting aside power generation and distribution in a small area. But I'm not aware of any um, any specific uh, government or city-led projects or uh, or programs um, like that. But I, I think microgrid systems is a little bit um, what you're getting at.
Maybe. I mean, I'm just, you know, we see applications for, for development where they want to put a lot on the site and we hate to see them consume some of that space for parking. But there's a property next door or a couple of doors away and they're not, you know, visitor servings, they're only using that parking at a certain time of day. The residences in this place might use it at a different time of day. So we, we have found ways to uh, share parking. And I'm just, not that I'm asking for an answer, but I'm just putting the idea, floating the idea for, as red meat that others can shoot down or you can let it float and see if it goes anywhere. That, you know, if we're really trying to get to net zero, one way we can do that is to make it easy for people who think it's hard to switch over, to encourage other people in the community to add more than they would need, right? PCNE does that. Uh, PCE allows that right now because they'll buy your excess energy. I noticed that uh, the California Public Utilities Commission uh, seems disinclined to see that continue in their net metering, uh, their NEM 3.0. But um, you know, it seems like an idea that might be worth considering. Last question, and I appreciate your forbearance with me. This is probably for Jill uh, and Winter. So uh, this comes to the planning commission because we're gonna be looking at the consistency of proposed development with these changes. And, you know, we routinely make findings that talk about a, a project being consistent with our code. So if a project didn't comply with our code, that would certainly provide grounds for modifying or denying the project. There's also uh, SEQA um, and the greenhouse gas section of an initial study. And if we uh, had the authority to make findings with respect to greenhouse gases, maybe that's another avenue that we could consider, especially for larger projects. Then, as a matter of local coastal program, I noticed that this ordinance is housed in Chapter 14, which is generally not where we put things that we would consider part of the local coastal program's implementation plan. And so I don't know if there would be a reference in the LCP IP that touched this that would provide a basis in the LCP for addressing these concerns. How do you envision that we would achieve uh, compliance through the administration of our land use planning laws?
I'm gonna go ahead and give this a shot. I, I think this is um, actually, you've got the tool you need with having this as part of our municipal code. Whether it's part of the LCP or not, um, the building permit process in and of itself, even for projects that might be exempt from coastal development permits, will be required to comply. And this can include, for example, accessory dwelling units, which um, staff is reviewing for administrative coastal development permits or if they're exempt. I'm not, I'm not sure that you really need to um, have findings to require everything that's required through our city code. So we can think about that a little bit more. I will say um, I know that Veronica worked with um, Scott, um, our associate planner on some um, standard condition of approval associated with this. So you will see um, new uh, condition of approval language uh, to, to make sure that we pick it up. We, we really like to tell applicants as early as we can when they're inquiring about um, project requirements, before they've got plans on the counter, what, what they may be uh, looking to have to include in their project. There's multiple points along the way where um, the wire gets tripped. So for example, we have an early review process um, that will generate such comments in our um, completeness letter. It'll come up again in conditions of approval and it will come up again in application for building permits. So there's, there's a lot of filters here to, to catch this. Uh, where I think it clicks in for the commission is if you have a discretionary permit where there is um, something above and beyond, um, you're, you're considering, for example, a parking exception or some, something else that is um, extraordinarily different about the project relative to the code. And you need to make findings and you need to support them with um, some provisions that may go above and beyond uh, the threshold that this ordinance is putting out. So for example, um, parking exception code right now allows waiving um, guest parking requirements or applying a mixed-use parking reduction in our mixed-use zone with um, some kind of canned findings if, if, for example, improvements to the public circulation system are provided, which can include uh, the provision of uh, EV charging station, um, which has been in the public space or improvements to the bike and ped system. This ordinance will require more onsite provisions for um, EV charging and so the commission may be seeking other things now to um, fulfill commitments associated with those kinds of findings. Now for projects with SEQA, um, greenhouse gas emission uh, standards, the city is using um, the Bay Area um, Air Quality Management District thresholds. That is what we need to use as our standard. Um, unless and until our climate action plan is adopted and if, if its requirements are um, more conservative than what's, what's on the books right now. So that's, that's how we are operating. Similarly, with vehicle miles traveled, Veronica made a mention of that today um, in presenting to you about uh, the different ways of actually measuring it. And um, when it comes to SEQA, beyond measuring it, we are required to demonstrate reductions. And um, there's some very interesting ways that that's gonna come forward. You're gonna see this for the first time with the Hyatt EIR. And we won't dig into that because that project's not on your agenda, but this is something that um, has been um, worked out for, for your consideration for really the first threshold project that needs to face that. I don't know if that answered your question. There's a lot of, a lot of context of um, what level is the project? Is it subject to SEQA?
Yeah, I, I, that was a great, that was a great answer and I really didn't expect the yes, no, this is the right answer. It was me just more open, basically opening up this little subject so that we as a commission can think about it. And you know that we're sort of interested, at least I am interested. Then uh, the last question is really circling back to um, the accommodation of the SEQA issue and the vehicle miles travel versus this source destination and the transportation versus um, you know, uh, building distinctions and how we get greenhouse gases. Because it's no secret uh, in Hacklum Bay, especially this time of year and for the next couple of months, a lot of the traffic that we have here, a lot of the fossil fuel emissions are going to be associated uh, with transportation, uh, people visiting us. And uh, they may be parking at the beach, they may be going through town. Not sure what we can do about the ones that are just passing through. But if they're stopping at the beach, um, it would be nice if we had an electrified beach parking capability or the ability for residents who um, might entertain, you know, who might be living adjacent to parking to be able to accommodate uh, the power requirements and invite visitors to use their power, presumably for a fee, I don't know. But uh, I'm trying to figure out where, if anywhere in the electrification ordinance or where we might go to uh, address that source of greenhouse gas emissions or if that, if we say, you know what, that's a state beach problem that is not on our plate. What's your thought about that?
Um, so those sorts of policies are um, what can be addressed in the climate action plan. So we have, we're currently working again, like I said, on um, quantifying our 2019 emissions and looking at how we're um, how we're estimating our emissions and then looking at um, if we continue with business as usual, what that will look like and if we implement various policies, what, what that will look like. So um, I think getting at the transportation, um, I mean, you saw the transportation is just as big as building energy and it's something that uh, will be, will need to be addressed. It's a little bit difficult um, on the local level. It's um, there's a lot of regional programs that are uh, in development or planned for future years that are considered. But um, the climate action plan is, is um, is the place where those sorts of policies will be asked.
Okay, well, thank, thank you. Thank you very much for entertaining my questions. And thank you, uh, Jill and Winter for uh, chiming in. And thank you colleagues for your patience uh, with all of that. Are you?
Thank you. So um, Veronica, can I just ask you one other thing? Jill sort of addressed this before, but um, you know, you, you, you're the one who's sort of living and breathing this. So what do you see as sort of a sticking point for planning, future planning commission uh, projects? Or, you know, what comes before us? What are we, what are we gonna look at that is changing? Like what, what do you see as a, as problematic?
I don't know. I don't know if I have a good, if I have a good answer. So I work, I work in, in public works. I work in a very different sphere. I don't, I don't know if I have a good enough idea of um, what sort of decisions that uh, you will make on a, on a day-to-day basis to be able to, to answer that question. I'm sorry.
Jill, Jill kind of addressed it already with the, the last answer to your question. So um, I was just curious. Thank you. Um, is there anyone else? Okay. Since we are, uh, we are not voting on this, um, if everyone is good, we can uh, move on to, uh, and thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, to Commissioner, sorry, to um, Director's Report. And that would be Jill.
Thank you. Thank you Chair and thank you for Veronica and um, we really appreciate all the work Veronica's doing. You will see her um, again when uh, the climate plan comes forward. We, we will make sure that the commission is in the loop on that. Report update for you, um, we have a few big things that we're working on and it, they are gonna come up this summer and so we want to make sure that we understand your schedules. Your next meeting is uh, June 28th. And we've been working on the housing element. We're behind, but we'll do our darndest to make our deadlines. And to do that, we would like to check in with you on the 28th with a bit of a study session to show you um, how the sites analysis has been developing. There's, a lot of it is born out of your land use plan, which uh, you are all so familiar with. But we are also having to evolve some of um, what we're doing based on how our, how our RENA came out, which is our regional housing needs allocation. So it would be a really targeted um, scope for that study session. We also would like to share with you um, a volume of work that has come from our uh, community engagement. Often, community engagement is um, moved through the commission and you have your hands all over it. But we've been doing a lot of work um, with agency interviews and some focus groups and um, some other approaches that um, staff's really involved in, but you haven't seen. So we, we would like to share that with you. Seven 12th, uh, so July, July 12th, um, we have a few private development projects that could make that meeting. I'm not sure that they will, so I'm not gonna announce it yet. If there was a meeting that we might cancel this summer, it would be the 12th of July. But we'll, we'll keep you posted on, and we, we are of course, interested in your schedule. As I me- mentioned earlier, the um, Hyatt Environmental Impact Report is, is coming forward. And we have uh, put down uh, July 26th for a hearing on that EIR. The EIR circulation period uh, has a mandatory um, for the, for the draft is required to be at least 45 days. We will have a 60-day lengthened circulation period to uh, give folks a couple more weeks. We are obligated to hold a public hearing. Um, this commission will, will do that during that period. And um, we could also uh, stretch it over two meetings if that's necessary. So we just want to be really, have some flexibility about our community's needs around this project as well as this commission's needs. There's a cool thing uh, coming to you August 9th. It's not a huge item, but it, from the perspective of your purview, but uh, we have a mural uh, downtown uh, that is going through a uh, RFP process. The city is sponsoring a mural on the uh, Cunha Store Building on the uh, Kelly Avenue side of that structure facing MacDutra. And the planning commission by code is the um, overseer of murals and um, it'll be, it'll be nice to bring that to you. Through the um, specs on that RFP process, it's all public. This went out um, several weeks ago. It's running through the city manager's office. The intent is um, uh, acknowledgement of 50 years of uh, pumpkin festivals. So it is themed and um, very Hacklum Bay oriented. Let's see, on, I think I already told you about that. I don't have too much more tonight. The next council meeting, they'll be um, adopting uh, budget and the capital improvement program. You of course, already saw the CIP. And on July 19th, uh, we will have an update for council on the uh, 555 Kelly RFQ for an affordable housing development proposal. So uh, quite a bit going on there. Uh, our housing coordinator is starting um, in two days and I can't wait to introduce you to him. And uh, he'll be, he'll be with uh, with me on a lot of the housing um, element work as well as these projects that we're looking at. Bridgette, there was a training item um, that I bumped into and I think I sent it to you and now I can't find it. We will, we will circle back on that. We know you, um, we keep promising training and none of them are quite, quite ready yet. But there was um, there was- But there was, there was something that just...
Yeah, it was, it was local too. I think it was...
It was.
It was a planning commissioner training. I, I haven't, my computer's just loading on it, but I can forward it to them.
Thank you. I think it might be in San Jose, so not super local, but...
But I mean, close, close enough for us.
Yeah. Okay. So we'll do that when, we'll get that over to you. I think it's in the fall, so you have plenty of time, lead time if you want to consider taking that. It looks, it looked good to me. And then I know the 21 Elements Group has promised and promised to provide training. They are so bogged down in all these housing elements that I think it just hasn't gotten pulled together, but that should be coming over the summer and we'll keep you posted. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you.
As for attendance of different meetings, I only have up to July 26th and I know Commissioner or Chair Goran, you said you would not be attending the 26th.
Right.
But the rest I have not heard is past the 26th of anyone, but it looked like that the last, the next two meetings that everyone would be attending. So that's all right.
Okay. Great. It is Commissioners, do you have anything that you want to add to the conversation? Time for Commissioner Reports. Anyone? I don't see anyone. Oh wait, there is one. Commissioner Benjamin, what's up?
I just wanted to mention that earlier this month, I visited the California Public Utilities Commission, me and, you know, several hundred of other people who were concerned about the net energy metering proposal changes that took place. And I testified speaking as an individual about my concerns about the impact that net energy metering 3.0 could have on the adoption of solar. And if you're interested or a member of the public is interested, I'm happy to discuss it. So far as I know, the CPUC hasn't made a decision about this and Governor Newsom hasn't made a decision about this. So depending on how you feel, maybe you like it, maybe you don't. But it's an opportunity to weigh in on a subject that seems quite pertinent to tonight's theme. So I thought I would just put that out there for you. Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah. Vice Chair Hernandez, yes?
Two items. First of all, it's so nice walking on the parallel trail going down to Poplar Beach. The, you know, paved trail that was done earlier this year is so nice and so pleasant and it's full of all the wildflowers. And, you know, the beach traffic isn't crazy, but it's certainly packed and you guys are doing a great job taking care of our beaches and keeping them clean. So thank you for, for that. The, the second thing is I get a lot of questions about the traffic light at Kelly and Highway 1. The light has been, like the big light has been knocked out. And so many people in my circle, especially teenagers, who are often distracted or complaining about it not being safe at that intersection. Is there, can we get an update on what's going on there at that intersection?
We can. I don't, I don't know. We'll check with the public.
Yeah, it's just several people have reported to me almost getting into accidents because somebody's not paying attention or sees the light down at Highway 92 and mistakes it for the light at their intersection. And yeah, so anyway. So if you had the...
Northbound.
Yeah. So, so if you're heading northbound, it's the, the main overhead light has been removed at some point. I don't know exactly what happened there, but yeah.
Thank you.
And I see no one else. Oh wait, yes I do. Mr. Reddick?
Thank you Chair. I just wanted to, as I sometimes remind the commission that this time of year, the, the Star Creek Land Stewards goats are currently grazing the city and county property south of Poplar Beach parking lot. They are scheduled to be driven up Poplar to the railroad right of way at 8:00 AM this Thursday. Always a colorful spectacle, so everyone's encouraged to come watch.
Yeah, I forgot to mention our public work superintendent helped supervise the goats crossing the road very early in the morning over the weekend from the Beechwood Glen Creek properties, crossing Highway 1 over to the city's lands over by the sand plant. So yeah, they're moving around. It's the same group. They're, they're doing a fine job.
I'm visualizing the running of the goats.
Yeah, it's very colorful. The shepherd always has two or three dogs helping out.
And no one gets gored. So it's, it's nice. It's not like the one is staying.
It's less dangerous.
Well, thank you everyone. If everyone is, do we, I guess, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second, we have a second, Commissioner Gossett.
Commissioner Reddick?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Mr. Benjamin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hernandez?
Yes.
And Chair Goran?
Yes, please.
Meeting approved to adjourn.
Thanks for that everybody.
You everybody.
Bye.
Buddy.
Bye.